You're all set to begin.
All right. Thank you so much, Sarah. Good evening and welcome to the February 13th, 2023 Barstool Planning Board meeting. The Planning Board's public hearing will be held tonight at 7:00 PM via remote participation methods. Alternative public access to this meeting shall be provided in the following manner. The meeting will be televised via Channel 18 and may be viewed via the Channel 18 website at streaming85.townbarstool.us/cablecastpublicsite. Real-time access to the Planning Board meeting is available utilizing the Zoom link or telephone number and meeting ID provided below, and public comment can be addressed to the Planning Board by utilizing that link and telephone number. And the phone number to dial in is 888-475-4499. And again, the meeting ID 828-8935-7506. Applicants, their representatives, and individuals required or entitled to appear before the Planning Board may appear remotely and may participate through the link or telephone number provided above. Documentary exhibits and/or visual presentations should be submitted in advance of the meeting so they may be displayed for remote public access viewing. And these materials may be accessed by contacting karenherrend@karen.herrend@town.barstool MA.us. We're calling 508-862-4064. And we will now introduce our board members, starting with Bob.
Hi. Good evening, Bob Twist.
And Tim.
Good evening, Tim O'Neil.
And Steve.
Good evening, Stephen Costello.
And Michael.
Good evening, Michael Messinas.
Thank you very much. And Ray and Mary are not with us this evening. And also introducing Town staff, Kate.
Good evening, Kate Maldonado, Assistant Director of Planning and Development.
And Jim.
Good evening, Jim Cooper, Senior Planner, Planning and Development.
And Karen.
Good evening, Karen Herrend, Administrative Assistant, Planning and Development.
Thank you so much. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast on Channel 18 in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 20. And I now will inquire if anyone else is taped in this meeting, and if so, please make your presence known. Seeing none, we will start the meeting with general public comment. This is public comment associated with none of the agenda items on our agenda this evening. And I believe we have Laura Cronin for general public comment. Laura, if you are on, if you could unmute and go ahead.
Yes. Good evening. Thank you, Chairman Norbeshad. I did want to have some general comment about having these types of meetings going live. I did speak before the Town Council last week requesting the Town Council to, wherever possible, have items of this importance be into the live meetings so that there'll be more of an opportunity for residents to access these meetings. At the time, he mentioned that it was left up to the commission chairs and this committee chairs as to when they would to go live. And I just wanted to just continue to ask that this particular item, because it is of such importance, to be held off until you are going live? And when do you anticipate this board being able to be live so that all of the public has access to this information in a more fair opportunity? Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. I appreciate that. I am going to make a statement later in the meeting under the matters not anticipated by the chair. We'll have a little discussion about the meeting format going forward. I appreciate that. Anybody else for general public comment? Okay, seeing none, we will move into our first item this evening, which is the Schuester Properties Regulatory Agreement.
Good evening. This is a regulatory agreement. Schuester Properties LLC seeks to enter into a regulatory agreement with the Town of Barstool to construct 34 condominium units in two buildings with associated improvements at 110 School Street and 115 School Street Hyannis. The redevelopment consists of 22 three-bedroom units and 12 two-bedroom units. A total of 70 parking spaces will be provided. Majority of members present and voting continued from August 8th, 2022, in order to form a subcommittee, and continued from September 26th, 2022, October 3rd, 2022, October 24th, 2022, November 14th, 2022, December 12th, 2022, and January 23rd, 2023. They're already open, so.
Yes. Perfect. Thank you very much, Steve. And this evening, I'd like to see if the applicant has any new comments to share. We'll then hear from the public for any new public comment. I would then recommend that we close the public hearing. In terms of a vote on this item, we've had a little difficulty with the next two meetings. I'm sorry, with this meeting tonight and our next meeting in terms of attendance. Unfortunately, we have two board members that obviously are not here this evening, as well as two board members that won't be here at our next meeting, which is February 27th. With that in mind, it's my opinion that we should wait until the March 13th meeting to actually vote on this item, to hopefully have a full board so that the full board can participate. Obviously, this is a big consequential item, and we want to have as much of the board here as possible. So with that, we'll go to the applicant. If the applicant has any information to present.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. For record attorney, John Kenny with the Law Office in Centerville, representing Schuester Properties. And with me tonight are Dale Janapp and Michael Nie from Janapp Architects, Dan O'Shiller from Downcape Engineering, and Stuart Bornstein, the applicant. There are minor edits that were submitted to the regulatory agreement. Nothing major. Mostly, it was clarifications, kind of in response to comments and concerns raised both by the public and by the board, kind of detailing a little bit more what the protocol for construction will be, et cetera. When we last left off at the last meeting, Mr. Chairman, I was going to respond to public comment, but if you're going to reopen it to public comment, I'd just soon go to public comment. I don't know if some of the board members that were missing at the last meeting, whether or not they have questions, can respond to those. And so I'd rather the public comment play out and then respond to the public comment and then ask that you close the hearing. And the other question I have, a concern, is are we assured of having a full board on March 13th? I mean, it's a lengthy delay again.
You're asking the same question that I asked myself. And, you know, certainly that is a question and a concern. I mean, at this point, we are expecting a full board on the 13th. But I am, you know, resolved that we need to, you know, work through this item and get it to Town Council, you know, one way or the other. So with that being said, you know, it's my intention to vote on March 13th if we have a minimum of a quorum, but I am expecting that we're going to have the full board.
Very good. Thank you.
Appreciate that, Attorney Kenny. So with that, we'll go to public comment. Again, I just want to stress that this is new public comment. Any public comment that has already gone before this board is part of the record. And, you know, just for the sake of everyone's time, I don't want to be too repetitive. So again, for new public comment, Sarah, if you could call on the first commenter. I'm not seeing Sarah in here, so we will just kick it off. If someone could just unmute and go ahead and start.
So my question, Steve, is what were the minor changes?
That's a great question, actually. Jim, would you mind just running through a couple of those for us? I know I'm putting you on the spot. If you're prepared for that, we also could come back to it if you prefer.
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman. I'm happy to run down quickly the red line version that the board is in receipt of. Minor changes in terms of, actually, a response to a number of issues that the board and the public brought up, just as clarifiers, that I thought, or the board and staff thought were positive changes, so we inserted into the agreement. Things such as in paragraph two of page one, in the whereas, adding a little more specificity to it. There was talks about permitted uses and densities, but including traffic and parking incorporated in there. Replacing the term downtown implementation district, as it's always been identified in these regulatory agreements, but is more commonly known as the regulatory agreement district. So correcting that, in my opinion. Furthering, let's see, identifying in existing conditions description under 115 School Street, removing any term identifying it as a parking lot. It's a gravel vacant lot. And so we corrected that identifier. Let's see, replacing in section three with the important documents required. It was stated as a will and just for legalese, just replacing it as a shall. Number 13, incorporating all the, some enhanced language in terms of the DPW having, or excuse me, the Barstool Town Engineer having more authority under the review, inspection, and approval of all public infrastructure being installed and completed. Number 20, identifying step by step the affordable housing requirements in much more detail. I heard, you know, from the board and from the public that that was certainly a necessary step, and so that was included, a number of additional, just step by step requirements for the affordable aspects of what is being proposed. Timing for the applications for the local initiative program, applications of the affordable applications being inserted in there more specifically again. Adding some language in terms of if an extension's required, a step by step requirement for authorities and approvals for any kind of extension of agreement or construction practices. And I think that's about it.
Just to add a couple extra comments, thank you, Jim. Clarification on the affordables that we changed so that three of the affordables will be at 65% of the AMI and two of the affordables at 80%. And basically, it's all just language clarification, clarifying exactly how we expected the project to work before the edits. But it's just, as Jim stated, just setting forth with more specificity what is required of the applicant if this project is approved. So nothing of any great substance, more specificity to guide people that are looking at this in the future as we go through the process of construction if approved.
Thank you, Attorney Kenny, and thank you, Jim. That was good detail and I believe some good additional information that was added. Sarah, are you available?
Mr. Chairman, as a point of order.
Yes, sir.
David Lawler, on behalf of Hyannis Marina. I just, before we get into public comment, because it's a little unordinary, I mean, a little different with the public comment being requested to go first. So can you explain to me the process going forward that there's going to be public comment? Is the applicant going to be making a presentation after the public comment? Or once public comment is closed, the hearing's closed, is there only going to be board discussion? What's the, what is the protocol? Because I'm a little concerned, because there's been changes that have been made after every meeting. If there are additional changes after, made, even, you know, someone might deem them de minimis, and others may deem those to be significant, that would public comment be still allowed on the next meeting if there are any changes to the regulatory agreement as submitted to the board? It's a little, and especially with the delay, the possibility that the next meeting might be in person. You know, I'm not sure that with this time, I'm just curious as to what your position is as far as the protocol is concerned going forward after this public comment. Could you explain that to me, please?
Sure. I mean, first off, I don't think the meeting format has any influence on any of that. It's my understanding, though, that no significant changes are going to be coming from the applicant. I don't believe the applicant has anything new to present this evening. Attorney Kenny, would you agree with that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Just to clarify, number one, the changes have been, mostly came from Town staff in response to prior public comment, and they've been on the website for about a good week or so. As far as I'm concerned, the regulatory agreement is done, and that's what will be voted on. As is normal protocol, after public comment, the applicant has an opportunity to respond to public comment, and that's all I'm asking for. I'm not planning any particular presentation tonight. I'm going to respond to the public comment that's been made about traffic, affordable housing, height, density, et cetera. So it's only in response, and then I would anticipate, as is the normal protocol, that you would close the public comment and go to board discussion.
Okay, and so, and John, I, thank you. I was just trying to clarify. I was a little confused, because I did see the things, you did post them on time. I reviewed those. I was questioning because of the long gap between now, February 13th, and the middle of March, if there was going to be additional changes, and if the event that happens, then I would assume public comment would be reopened. I mean, obviously, something could be de minimis, you know, which is obvious, you know, changing a, you know, a little language, I understand. I just wanted to make, I was just trying to factor in what the actual process was going to be. That's all. Thank you.
That was a great question. Certainly appreciate it. You know, the intention is for us to, you know, continue to that March 13th meeting, have the board delivering, and then make a vote. Steve Costello, do you have a comment?
I did. I think it's, in my opinion, it seems only fair to, we're accommodating board members that are, you know, for personal reasons, unable to attend, and the speculation at this point is that March 13th is the date that we're actually going to vote potentially on this item. I would be inclined, you know, as much public comment as we have had, I don't see the harm in just maintaining the public hearing in an open status until we do convene again where we can, you know, if there is any new comment that may not have been forwarded at this point, rather than to have to reopen it, since essentially, we're going to, you know, postpone a vote potentially until the 13th. My inclination would be just keep it open. I don't see why not, particularly in light of, you know, possibly having some things change, even though we don't anticipate any changes, but it may be, it may be just more of a procedural thing, but that's my opinion.
I'm comfortable with that as well. You know, obviously, there's going to be public comment this evening. The board, you know, will have questions and potentially comment, and if those lead to any changes, then having the meeting open certainly, there's no harm in that. So I agree with Steve, and I'm comfortable with that. All right, we're going to continue on with public comment. Sarah, are you available to call on people?
Yes, I am.
Okay, great.
All right, so the first person we have for public comment this evening is Cheryl Powell. Cheryl, you could unmute. It's your opportunity to speak to public comment on this item.
Hi. Can everyone hear me? Okay.
Yes, perfect.
Excellent. I have a quick question before I do public comment, because I need to also apologize. I wasn't able to make the last meeting because it was when I was in the office, so I couldn't attend. So many apologies. Has, the indication was just stated that the reg agreement is pretty much approved. I know at one stage it was talking about it would need to come back to the HHDC due to the changes. Is that now out the window, and it's already agreed that it won't, or is that still a possibility and just hasn't been voted on yet?
Yeah, I'll answer that. I mean, obviously, nothing is agreed upon until a vote is taken, but right now, that waiver is included in the regulatory agreement.
Okay. So the only thing I wanted to say is, aside from the apology for not being able to make the last one, is that I do feel that there are sufficient significant changes that it should come back to the HHDC. I was waiting to see what would happen with zoning, but it looks like the waterfront is staying pretty much the same. But the, and I don't want to say too much, because I would never want to be accused of predetermination or anything, and I wouldn't determine anyway now. There's so many things that are constantly changing, but I do feel that it should come back, because what was approved narrowly before is not as significantly different than what it is now. And I commend Mr. Bornstein for making changes, but I don't want to comment on him, because I try to, so I can always, if anything ever comes back, approach it openly, freshly, as a fresh new application with changes, to be fair. And, but anyway, just to express my opinion on that, obviously, I don't want to go on anything else, because that could be predetermination, and that way, it keeps mine very short.
Got it. Okay. Thank you very much for that.
Okay.
Next, for public comment, we have Laura Cronin. Laura, you could unmute. It's your opportunity to speak.
Laura, are you on?
Yes, I am. Sorry. I've got two computers in front of me, and I was working the wrong mouse. My apologies. I did want to, one of the questions I had was, Mr. Lawler had asked about the process now going forward, but with remember Costello saying that you'd be willing to extend the public comment out to the March 13th meeting, that really is kind of where I was at right now, and being able to just listen to more of the comment and part of taking another look at the regulatory agreement in totality. But that would be my comment, so I appreciate that. And then you had mentioned you would be talking about future meetings, so with regard to having live meeting format, so I would appreciate that. I'll wait, you would have said. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Laura. Appreciate that.
Next is Marie LeBlanc. Marie, did you want to provide comment at this time?
Thanks for answering the question about the additional changes. So at this point, could I just ask our, since there really isn't going to be any more substantive changes from the proposal end, are we at like two degrees of separation, 10 degrees of separation, no degrees of separation? Is the board in a position at this point, based on everything that's been heard, to make a vote? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, that's my inclination, and I will say it's just a standard kind of point of order. Typically, public comment is not kind of a question and answer type theory, but I'm happy to, you know, I'm happy to say that it's my sense that we're ready for a vote. You know, I don't believe our board is going to find consensus on this one. I think some board members, you know, will land differently than others. But, you know, we started this in August, and I think we owe it to, you know, the applicant and the town to move through the process, you know, for good or for worse. So I think that we are at a point where we've got to get a full board, and we've got to, you know, put a vote to it.
Thank you. Next is Elizabeth Werfbein. Elizabeth, you can unmute. Now's your opportunity to speak.
I think you're still muted. There you go. Can you hear us?
Yes, thank you. Sorry. It was, it wasn't working. It's working now. Thank you. I'm Elizabeth Werfbein. I'm the Executive Director of the Hyannis Main Street Business Improvement District right next door. I, earlier today, as a place marker or a reminder, sent, we sent our preliminary support letter from last April about the positive change in style for this project from the very first design years ago. We commend, you know, Stu for, you know, reapplying with a different version that was, you know, more of a coastal style. As Main Street bid supports upmarket housing and housing that's walkable to the downtown, this is a total best practice. As you all know, in your planning jobs, retail follows residential, you know, and vice versa. It's a very important part of having a positive community. So we appreciate Mr. Bornstein's efforts here and your important efforts in regards to the real concerns of height, density, and precedence in relation to the harbor. As other projects going forward, we do hope you put careful consideration into this one. Again, our future vision includes a well-crafted effort to create a vibrant and walkable year-round downtown and the housing that supports it. We thank you for your time and all the good people involved in this project that are really working hard to make it fabulous. So, thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
Next is Felicia Penn. Felicia, you can unmute, and now's your opportunity to speak.
Thank you. As you all are aware, this project is too big for the one-plus acres it is on. It breaks almost every zoning parameter. It's too dense. It's too high. Forgives landscaping in and around the parking areas. It claims five public benefits that are not benefits to the public but are necessary upgrades to support the 70-something bedrooms proposed in the prospective tenants. For example, the EV charging stations clearly are not public benefits since they're on private property. You, the members of the Planning Board, are the only ones who can defend the zoning in the Harbor District. Say no to building heights that are 177% higher than allowed. It's just not reasonable for the applicant to propose 62 feet when the zoning allows a maximum of 35. You have clear standing to reject this waiver. Say no to four and a half stories when zoning allows two and a half stories. You have every right to reject a building that's 80% higher than zoning allows. Say no to waving landscape buffers around and within the parking areas. The Town Council just passed new downtown Hyannis zoning, as you know, that depends, that demands landscaping to screen and shade parking areas. It also dictates that parking be in the rear or sides of a building. If you accept these waivers, it would conflict with everything the Town Council just adopted in the new zoning. In this version of the regulatory agreement, I didn't see anything about a full-time caretaker on site, and I believe the last version did have that in there. Maybe you moved it someplace, but I was wondering what happened to that language. If you don't reject the request for relief from height and density requirements, then how will you say no to others who come before you? You'll be setting a terrible precedent. How will you say no to the new owners of the anchor inn when they come to you with a similar request that doesn't conform? The town should not be playing the game of let's make a deal. It's very dangerous in a slippery slope. Say no. Either the project is too big or the parcel is too small. You can't do anything about the parcel. So please either make the project comply or say no to the request to waive the zoning. This is not about making friends happy. This is about respecting the town and the residents who live in Hyannis. Please don't kick the can down the road to the Town Council. If not, you poo. And I also would ask very kindly and respectfully that you keep the public comment open. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, as a point of order, there was nothing new there. Can we not repeat the same speeches we've heard on multiple occasions? And I thought this was for new public comment only.
Thank you, Attorney Kenny. Sarah, who do you have next?
Next is Paul Grover. Paul, you can go ahead and unmute. Now's your opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Sarah. As I had mentioned it the last time they spoke, I'm a real estate broker in town, and there's a good possibility that I'd have an opportunity to be selling some of these units, so I just wanted to disclose that. But I appreciated what Elizabeth was speaking about earlier tonight, because that's a lot of my sentiment from a real estate standpoint in terms of downtown Hyannis and the main the Main Street Business Improvement District and bringing people into Hyannis. I think that um, I think that the project's in line with, with the direction that many people feel we should go in Hyannis. And um, in terms of the modifications that have been made in the recent video that was prepared by um, Stu Bornstein, the applicant, and his team, I um, I've shared that with some clients and just, for what it's worth, this, the sentiment seems to be very positive in terms of the um, the changes and the modifications that have been done there. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul. Appreciate that.
Uh, next for public comment is Roberta Mop. Roberta, you can unmute and now's your opportunity to speak.
I'm sorry about that.
No problem.
I was uh, I was at the town hall and that, anyway. Um, my comment, I'm with Felicia Penn. Um, I've been looking at this property. I don't know how long it's been a restaurant. What's the history? How long has, do, do we know the planning board, how long uh, the dockside has been a restaurant? Because that's important. I know in Nantucket, they, they try to preserve, um, like I said before, the Patty Page experience of um, this public view is, you know, is the, for tourism, for our town. Um, even in Boston, you know, the top of the hub, when a building is built, there's always a restaurant so that everyone who comes to Cape Cod still can enjoy the best view of Hyannis Harbor. Um, I mean, I bring my family each time they visit to the dockside. Um, I have so many friends that are so upset about the dockside closing, um, this business being displaced, and to have that best view of Hyannis Harbor become privatized is, it just, it's horrendous to have that. It, it, it doesn't work for the community. Um, I don't understand why the planning board would allow this view where the Fugawi, all that goes on in Hyannis Harbor. Um, that, the planning board should reject this plan. I mean, if they're going to put condos, fine, put it on the other side of School Street, but One Ten School Street should remain the dockside. Um, and if they can't preserve the history of this great Patty Page-type restaurant, at least allow the public to still have the best view of the harbor. I can't understand why anyone would want to make this private condo so that no longer uh, will, this is setting a precedent that um, the public can no longer um, enjoy this beautiful view. I don't know how, how else I can say this, but I, I implore the planning board to reject this plan, please.
Thank you, Roberta. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Uh, next for public comment is Marty Riley. Marty, you can unmute and now's your opportunity to speak. Just a reminder, Marty, it's star six on your phone to unmute.
Thank you so much. Yep, just for the record, uh, my name is Marty Riley and um, I was once part of the team formerly representing Stuart Bornstein on this project. And shortly after the initial planning board meeting, uh, when the planning board decided to put together a working group comprised of members of the planning board and members of the Town Council, I made a decision to step aside and, and refrain from further representing Stuart on the project until such time as he made some further changes to the plan uh, based on concerns that were expressed by a few of the abutters and others. And since that time, I'm, I'm still no longer a part of the formal team, so I'm presenting testimony here tonight as a private citizen. But I believe that Stuart has shown good faith um, with many of the changes that he's now made to this plan. And I think he's made as many changes as he possibly can, as practicable to make the project economically viable. And based on this fact, um, I, I support the project, the very positive one for Hyannis Harbor and for the Village of Hyannis and the town of Barnstable in the aggregate. Um, you know, it's going to provide some very badly needed high-end housing on Hyannis Harbor, which is, which is very important to generating tax revenues and, and transforming um, the harbor in, in a positive way. And it's also going to provide an affordable um, off-site workforce housing component, which, which is equally as important and needed. Uh, I, I think the project, after much thought and deliberation and, and review of this new revised plan down to four stories, four-and-a-half stories, I, I really think it's a, a beautifully-designed, transformative residential development that will, will bring many positive benefits to Hyannis Harbor and downtown Hyannis and the town of Barnstable in the future. Um, you know, it's going to be nicely landscaped uh, with sidewalks and lighting and enhanced security for residents and neighbors, which is going to increase property values for all the immediate abutters. It's going to be a tremendous improvement to the surrounding neighborhood and the current year-round landscape where homeless people unfortunately presently congregated the site. And, and in the past, as we all know, there's been increases in crime in that area, and it's a great concern to all the immediate abutters and residents and businesses that operate there. Right now, they, they have to lock their doors during the day, the business owners, because of concerns about incidents with homeless and, and other crime activity that takes place there. Um, I also think that uh, it, it's going to generate about seven hundred thousand dollars in new tax revenue, which is greatly needed for the town. So, you know, you can't let the perfect be the enemy of the good. I, I know I have some friends that oppose this, among them Felicia Penn, who I respect greatly, and I've met with Felicia on this project in the past and said that I was going to try to advocate that Stuart go to four stories. I, I think he's pretty much done that in the past over the years. I've represented Wayne Kirker and many of the businesses down there on the harbor. And I, I, I think that this is a positive project for, for Hyannis and, and for the town of Barnstable and for the, you know, as, as the economic center, the cultural center, the transportation center of, of the Cape and the islands and the gateway to the islands. So, you know, I know that everybody's put a tremendous amount of time into this, both members of the planning board and members of the Town Council, and I think they, Stuart as the developers tried to incorporate as much of their concerns as possible. So I, I'm for the project and I'm not on the payroll, I'm saying this as a private citizen. And I would respectfully ask that um, you approve the regulatory agreement and let it go to the council and, and hope that they would approve it as well. Uh, so thank you for your time and your consideration and the opportunity to make this statement. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Marty. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Um, that is all I had for public comment. There are a couple of town councillors on, um, so I didn't know if any of them had any comments they wanted to make. Um, but other than that, that's the end of the public comment that I had.
I uh, I, I haven't been reached, David Lawler.
I'm sorry, David. I had you as a representative someone. Yes, David, go ahead.
Okay. Um, good evening. Um, and I'm going to try not to go over and over some of the things that we have in the past, uh, though some of it I do want to address because there's been some uh, changes that have occurred since the last meeting, and in particular, um, the change involved in that the new zoning was passed. I know uh, Jim's on here, congratulations. Elizabeth, the whole planning team did a great job with that, and it's going to be great for the town. Um, but when you look at what's been passed in the new zoning in downtown Hyannis, even under, uh, first of all, this area, for whatever reasons, was not involved in the changes. However, the new zoning that did pass, the highest building allowable under any circumstances is smaller than this building. So even with all the changes, and then Felicia went into the uh, changes associated, uh, the, the zoning associated with um, you know, plants and, and concealing up, you know, parking and putting parking in the rear and all the other things. But the height, the precedent this is going to set is that, first of all and foremost, the height in this district is two-and-a-half. But even if the zoning were to change and would be consistent with the new zoning, it's still bigger than what the planning board in its ultimate wisdom has been working on for years and says the biggest building we want is four stories, not four-and-a-half. And oh, it's only a half-story. Wha- wha- what kind of precedent are you going to set when the first project out the door, the first project out the door after, after comprehensive zoning was passed, after um, having approximately uh, you know, I don't know how many Town Council meetings were postponed to get it through because they needed a nine-to-nine vote, they got that. Um, and I know multiple changes were made to the zoning. So the first project out the door is going to violate the highest building height of this zoning. What does that say about the town, the planning department? What does it say about, you know, the um, the predictability of what we're trying to accomplish? So I, I, I just think that the precedent that that's going to set out the door is horrific. And who knows, well, you know, as, as Felicia indicated, what's going to go um, on the harbor at this point in time. It's inconsistent, it's not allowed in this district, and it's just simply too high. It's four-and-a-half stories, again, on the highest point in the harbor. When you come in from the water, you know, it's two-and-a, it's two stories greater than what's allowed, almost double. Um, it's too intense. I um, want to talk a little bit, I was, I was listening to Mr. Riley, and I know he's very well-intended, a, a, a complete gentleman, but um, you know, he talked about um, profitability with Mr. Bornstein. Mr. Bornstein, it, it, first of all, that shouldn't be a consideration of this board, uh, but he has, he has a zero basis in the property, whatever he decides to. He can put numerous things on that property to be profitable. Um, and it doesn't have to be a four-and-a-half-story building dominating the harbor scene, the harbor scene. Now, uh, one other issue, um, and I was, um, it wasn't brought up in the proposed regulatory agreement that I talked about at the last meeting just very briefly, um, is that the conversations concerning um, the um, the weight of the water, uh, and really um, yeah, you know, that it was going to be congested, you know, trucks back and forth. I'm not even going to get into that. If this board does uh, propose that there's going to be some type of um, condominium uh, board, uh, building there, and they do approve it or they do recommend it to the Town Council, um, I had indicated previously about a construction moratorium between June, uh, June fifteenth and September fifteenth. It's done in other places on the Cape, in particular, high-end places. I know Oyster Harbors has it, and I believe Willow Bend has it, and I believe a few other places have it on the Cape, where you're not allowed to complete construction during the summer months. Now, this area, that road is critically impacted today and on a regular basis as is. You bring cranes, construction equipment to be, to simultaneously construct two, four-and-a-half story buildings, that road, it's going to be a disaster in the summertime, it's going to create a tremendous safety um, hazard. These businesses, the um, the harbor, the, the docks on the harbor, that's where they get their income. Um, I, I, I don't know if that was just oversight, that the board um, didn't address that uh, in their discussions, but again, we don't believe that this should go through. We really don't. It's going to create a terrible precedent, it's inconsistent with zoning, and um, the, with respect to um, this moratorium construction, it would be absolutely catastrophic to everybody in that area and probably including hi, uh, I mean, including the steamship, I can't speak for them. I, but certainly um, for the harbor uses, uh, if construction was allowed. I mean, this is Cape Cod. I know it's expanded into, and we're trying to expand it into more of a twelve-month community, but the bread and butter, especially on the water, uh, occurs uh, between June fifteenth and uh, September fifteenth. I'm not looking for Memorial Day to Labor Day. We know that Memorial Day is a busy weekend and then it doesn't really, summer doesn't really kick in until the fifteenth or the twentieth of June. But um, that certainly would be something we're looking for. And lastly, on a personal note, and Marty, I don't think you made any offense, but we don't lock our doors. I'm, my office is in downtown Hyannis. We don't lock our doors. I'm open for business and everybody else is. It's a beautiful place. Don't be scared to be here. Um, yeah, you know, um, the, but the situation is um, clearly that this building is too high and it's the wrong height uh, for the, and it's the scope of it and everything else. You've heard me before. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Attorney Lawler. Appreciate that. And um, Sarah, just one final check, if you have any other members of the public looking to comment on this?
I don't believe so.
All right. Do we have any counselors on that have a comment to make? Not seeing any at the moment. Okay, great. So first, let me start by just checking with the board here. Do any board members um, oppose leaving the public hearing open until March thirteenth? You all right with that?
I'm with it.
Great. Okay. Perfect. And um, let's go to the board now and uh-
Mr. Chairman, excuse me for, for interrupting. I, I thought I was going to have an opportunity to respond to a public comment.
Yes, let's do that now. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I, I've looked over the multiple meetings we've had on this, and I've tried to kind of boil it down to what I think are the major issues that I've heard from both the public and from the uh, uh, board members. Uh, first, the affordable housing. Uh, several members made comments that they want domiciles, not bedrooms. Our original proposal was for a mixture of units. Uh, after meeting with the subcommittee, Hilda Hay from the Housing Committee was on the subcommittee, and her feedback to my client was, they need three-bedroom units. So Mr. Bornstein upped the requirement, he's only required to provide three, he's upped it to five, uh, three-bedroom units at Three Ten Main Street. Now, so it, the comments were made, we're looking not at number of bedrooms, but the, the number of um, uh, domiciles. Well, really, the change was made in response to, response to Hilda Hay from the Housing Committee, uh, and we uh, gave her five three-bedroom units, well more than, than is required. Uh, other comments, uh, traffic clogging up South Street and School Street, uh, and emergency vehicles trying to come down South Street. The restaurant there, that's open from, I don't know, June to September or October, whenever they, they, they close up, generates mu- much more traffic than this twenty-nine-unit condominium complex uh, will do. And I'll get it in the construction protocols shortly, but during the busiest peaks, this restaurant is its busiest, and there have been no issues with uh, blocking emergency vehicles going either down to the uh, docks uh, to take the police boat out or, or going to uh, the hospital. Concerning the view of Hyannis Harbor, the tugboats restaurant is coming down whether this project is approved or not. This is private property. The, that property, that building has a lot of maintenance issues. It's a maintenance headache for my client. During the, during the busy season, it's a maintenance headache, and during the off-season, it's both a maintenance headache and problems with the homeless, uh, constantly having problems with people living underneath the deck or trying to break in, uh, trashing the place. So that building is coming down whether this project goes forward or not, and this is private property. There is a town pier at the end of the dock, uh, at the end of School Street. Access will be improved. There'll be nice new sidewalks, a nice new paved road, and if anybody wants to get on and look at the harbor, there's a town pier down there. My client is even willing to donate benches to sit down there if the town so desires. Uh, and as far as restaurant views, there's tugboats, there's Baxter's, um, uh, the dockside will no longer exist in, in short order. Uh, construction timeframes and protocols, yes, Oyster Harbors has a uh, a ban on construction during the summer. I don't know about Willow Bend, but those bans are for the, for the residents because they don't want to hear the noise. Oyster Harbors lifted that ban when they wanted to redo their clubhouse, and they, they worked morning, noon, and night all through the summer, building their new clubhouse over there. Uh, so we have to work with the town through the, the uh, building department, the building commissioner, and have construction protocols which require that School Street remain open at all times, and that will be done.
and that will be done. And then I get to the, what I call, called the big three, and somebody else referred that to them, might have been Felicia, I'm not sure, but the height, the density, and the precedent. As Mr. Lawler just noted, the town passed the new zoning. He was correct on that, but he's incorrect on the height that's allowed. And they also keep referring to our project as being on the harbor. We are not on the harbor. We are full lot removed, both parcels are one full lot removed from the harbor. In fact, we are closer to the downtown Village District that just got approved than we are at the harbor. The downtown Village District allows up to four floors. The first can be up to 18 feet, and the other three can be up to 16 feet. That's a total of 66 feet, which is higher than our buildings. Our buildings are, the West Building at 115 School Street is 62.38 feet, and the one on the east, the old Dockside site is 59.98 feet. So we will be smaller than the buildings that are allowed across the street. And this is not an isolated building. As I stated, we're one full lot from the harbor. Yes, we're up on a hill, but our height is not isolated. It's not like we're in, surrounded by a bunch of two and a half story buildings. You've got one tower at the hospital, a second one that's been approved. You've got the old Greenery Building, which Attorney Lawler represented, which is well above the height allowed. Town Hall is well above the height that was allowed. And then you've got his client, Mr. Kirk's buildings, which are on the harbor, which are in the two and a half stories district, which are 40, between 42 feet and 52.8 feet. Those are right on the harbor. So all this nonsense about this is too high, and what kind of a precedent are you setting? Look around, you all went down there, you are an opportunity to look. If you haven't, as a board member, go down, go down the end of School Street and take a look, look at the hospital tower, look at the Greenery Building, look at Mr. Kirk's buildings, look at the Town Hall, and you'll see that this is not a 60-foot building amongst two and a half story structures. The density, that was a big concern of everybody, and my client responded to that. There was a 15% reduction in the total number of units. Out of the 15% reduction, four of them are three-bedroom units, only one was a two-bedroom unit. So there's a significant reduction in both the number of bedrooms and the number of units. On the, back to the height, we've gone from five and a half stories down to four and a half stories. And then as far as precedent is concerned, that's pure and simple nonsense. Each proposal that comes before you has to stand on its own merits. You can't point and say, well, you gave that guy this, you have to give it to me. Each project has to, has to stand on its own merits. If you had a building, somebody that came in with a four and a half story building with a parking lot, a surface parking lot facing the harbor with a big, simple, pure box, you're not going to approve it. And they can't look and say, well, you gave Bornstein four and a half stories, you got to give it to me. This building needs the height and the density, as we've stated before, to pay for the infrastructure with the underground parking and the beautiful design. If other people want to build beautiful designs like that, I say God bless them, myself, and welcome to Hyannis. But when you go around the harbor, as Mr. Costello walked everybody around, and it also includes the views of the harbor. If you start at High Line, you've got Bismarck Park, there's plenty of views there. You've got, oh, the park in the corner, I forget, escaping my memory the name of it. And then you've got the Maritime Museum Building as well, all with views of the harbor, all owned and controlled by the town. There are minimal parcels available for development. Somebody mentioned the Anchor Inn. That's a possibility for redevelopment. That would be next door to the Twin Towers at the hospital. Whether or not somebody brings that forward and you want to approve it or not would be up to you, that project would have to stand on its own merits. You don't owe Mr. Bornstein 60 feet because the hospital got 85. So it's just, it's height and density, and whether or not you want this beautiful building in downtown Hyannis. Other people said, no, it's a beautiful building, put it in a different location. It won't pay for itself in a different location. It's the hot, it's the water views that help pay for this. But I think that we've heard everything we can possibly hear about this. I think it's time for the planning board to have their own internal discussion in a public forum, but I think it's time to close public hearing. We heard nothing new tonight, just the same repetitive speeches, and it's, I think it's time to close public hearing, and let's put this thing to a vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney. I appreciate that. Let's go to the board and see if the board has comments they'd like to offer, questions for the applicant, starting with Bob.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I did have a chance to review the video of the meeting, the last meeting, which I missed for a medical reason, but I had had a chance to review that. I don't have any questions based upon what was presented at that meeting nor at this meeting. I will have some comments at the time we vote in order to explain whatever my decision ultimately is, but I'll defer that until we vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. And Bob, you're in favor of keeping the public hearing open until that time?
I'm in favor of keeping it open. I think it's six and one, half dozen of another. If we close it and something changes, we're going to have to reopen it. If we leave it open, we're going to close it if there's no change. I mean, this is an anthill issue. I have no problem keeping it open and just moving on.
Sounds good. I appreciate that. Steve?
Thank you, Steve. I have really no comments other than, you know, I wish we could be voting on this tonight because I think we're at a point where we have all the information. I think the amount of time we as a board and we as a subcommittee and we as a community have spent on this has been, in my opinion, well-youthed and very thorough. So I would anticipate new information. I'm in favor of leaving the public hearing open simply because there may be, you know, reasons to open it, reopen it in the future, but I would strongly urge that I personally don't need to hear everyone's stated positions again. I think everyone who has either a pro outlook or a con outlook have made their cases very eloquently and sufficiently. So I would prefer that, you know, we don't have to kind of rehash those things again. So in terms of the vote itself, it appears that if we move it to the 13th, and my suggestion would be, I'm fine doing that, but I would also suggest that with a forum, we do need to have a vote on that, on that night to allow both the applicant and the public to, you know, have the ability to move forward one way or the other with this proposal.
I agree with all of that. Thank you very much. And Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree with my fellow board members that, you know, I think we've kind of have gotten there, and it's time to move this into board deliberations and speak among ourselves. And as far as leaving the public hearing open versus closing it, I'm kind of fine either way. I think keeping it open, if the plan's to continue to time in March, makes sense just in case there is a change, something else comes through, something else hashes out on the reg agreement in the time being. So it makes sense to me. That's all, Mr. Chair.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Tim and Michael?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. At this point, I don't think I have anything else to add. I think we have a lot of material so far. A lot has been done, and I'm okay either. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Michael. So Steve, I think we'd look for a motion to continue the matter to March 13th, where we will take a vote on the matter after we have forward discussion, and we will leave the public meeting open until that time.
I would like to make a motion to continue RA 2022-002 Dockside Residence, 110 School Street, 115 School Street, to March 13th, 2023, at 7:00 PM.
Thank you, Steve. And a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Bob. All those in favor, Bob?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And myself, Steve Rochard, votes aye. Attorney King, anything to add before we move along?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one through you to Mr. Costello. How many of those books have you actually read?
Well, I think I'm a very learned individual. Really, I've read the majority of them, but.
I thought you were in the library.
And obviously, none of them are law books, so don't feel threatened.
Okay, very good. Thank you all very much. Good night.
Thank you, Attorney King. I appreciate that. And moving along to our next item, it's a subdivision. And Bob?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a subdivision matter. William Egan has submitted an application for a definitive subdivision at Old Stage Road and Parker Lane, West Barnstable, Massachusetts, subdivision number 827. The plan for this subdivision is entitled Definitive Subdivision Plan of Land on Old Stage Road and Parker Lane in Barnstable, Mass., prepared for William Egan, prepared by Gallagher Engineering dated October 26, 2022. The subject properties shown on assesses map 152, parcel 005, and map 152, parcel 009. If it's appropriate, Mr. Chairman, I'd move at this time to open the public hearing.
Thank you. And a second?
This is Tim. I'll second.
Thank you, Tim. All those in favor, Bob?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And myself, Steve Rochard, votes aye. The matter and the public hearing are open, and I believe, if I'm not mistaken, this is going to be, the applicant has requested the continuation until February 27th. Is that right?
I have a motion, Mr. Chair, in that regard. The applicant has requested continues till February 27th, 2023, at 7:00 PM via Zoom, so I move that the hearing be continued to that date and that time.
Excellent. And a second on that?
I'll second. Michael, let me see this.
Thank you, Michael. Bob, did I get you? All those in favor?
Did you call me? Yes, if you did.
Okay. Bob is an aye. Tim?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And myself, Steve Rochard, votes aye. Okay, so we will get into that one next meeting. Go to Kate for an LCP update.
Good evening, Chair. Kate Maltonato, Assistant Director, Planning and Development. I'm excited to announce that after the last five or so of months of significant public outreach, and thank you to everyone who's attended meetings to date, our next step will be holding a Bringing It Together workshop. So this is really what is, the name says, bringing together all of the elements of our Phase One to reflect on key themes of public input as well as key trends related to existing conditions data. And this we will be presenting in collaboration with our consultant teams, Barrett Planning Group, as well as Dodson and Flanker, with an objective of reflecting on those themes and trends in order to, together as a community, establish our vision for the next 10 or so years for what the future of Barnstable should be with those 10 themes and really reflecting on the values that our community upholds. There's two opportunities to attend this workshop. We want it to be flexible and meet our residents where they are, so we will be holding a virtual option that'll be held February 28th during the lunch period between noon to 115:00 PM. And then we will be holding an in-person meeting the following night, Wednesday, March 1st, between 5:00 to 7:00 PM. We're really enthused by this meeting because we're partnering with Barnstable Recreation to make this a family-friendly opportunity. So there'll be pizza for all attendees, including the kids and parents, and we will also be offering arts and crafts and a movie for kids ages kindergarten through fifth grade. So there's opportunity for kids to be engaged in activities while the parents can come and learn more and reflect on what our vision of Barnstable should be. The last thing I know is that for planning purposes, we are asking for attendees to pre-register. You'll have to pre-register to get a Zoom link for the virtual meeting. And then as far as figuring out the quantities of pizza and childcare, we're also asking that you pre-register for the in-person meeting as well. We will be posting a press release tomorrow or Wednesday very soon, and this information will be available on our website, barnstablelcp.com. So we're really excited. We hope that our residents can come to one or both of these meetings, both virtual and person, to help us to establish our vision for the future of Barnstable.
I love it. Well said, and really impressed by the outreach efforts you guys have done so far. It's awesome. What a great format for that meeting. Moving along to correspondence, we have three. First is a Chapter 91 Notice for 153 Seabview Ave, Osterville, McWilliams, a stone revetment. Chapter 91 Notice for 332 Wheeler Road, Marson's Mills, Allen, that's for a pier. And our last one, Chapter 91 Notice for 24th Bloom Ave, Marson's Mills. So this is for, let me just read the name, Maskevich is for a pier. And the board is in receipt of public comments and concerns regarding this item. In accordance with Chapter 91, the planning board may hold a public hearing if the board deems it necessary. Given that we have had public concerns regarding this one, I feel it's appropriate to provide the public with an opportunity to learn this matter. We can also invite the applicant. If the board agrees, I would like to leave this item on the agenda for our next meeting, February 27th, and ask staff to contact the applicant and those who issue a public comment to attend that meeting so they can make their concerns heard. Jim, I'll turn it over to you for a moment, just explain kind of the backstory and why a Chapter 91 Notice would be referred to the planning board.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So yes, on your, on your agenda, from time to time, we see these Chapter 91 notices come through. Typically, the board relies heavily on the Conservation Commission. Sorry, Arlene, would you mind muting yourself real quick? So typically, the planning board relies heavily on the Conservation Commission for reviewing their expertise of these matters as these, these are typically, you know, small docks and piers, and so those are matters that would go before conservation almost, almost always. However, through Chapter 91, several years back, they provided an updated, update, update to the regulation, which requires that the planning board play a role in reviewing Chapter 91 notices. It specifically states that the planning board may, and the key word is may, hold a public hearing and provide written comment to the state if, if it deems it necessary. As you guys likely know, you know, we go through these, we receive them, and if, and if there aren't concerns by Conservation Commission or others, then we, the board does not weigh in on the, on the matter. We have 45 days to weigh in. However, as, as the chairman noted, there have been several concerns raised by, on this topic, and so the planning board certainly, it's within their jurisdiction to hold a hearing. The hearing is, has been noticed by the applicant already. It's been in the paper, and that's why the, the attention has been raised, and that, and in the paper, it states that public comment is submitted to the planning board, and is why you are in receipt of that now. So if you like, as, as the chairman mentioned, I think it would be appropriate to, to have this discussion if the board so chooses at your next regularly scheduled meeting. We can invite the applicant as well as any, any members that did have concerns, and then at that point, you can have a thorough discussion and decide whether or not to provide written comments to the state.
Understood. So ultimately, the conclusion of it would be to either kind of, you know, give it our blessing or to decide to put some findings into writing and refer that to the state. Is that right?
Right. So there are, and I can provide the board with, it's, I believe, 11 standards that, that the, the application is to meet. I could provide the board with those 11 standards. The applicant also addresses those standards in their application. Certainly, we can have Conservation weigh in and provide you with some guidance as well. And yes, ultimately, I can pull it up one second. sorry, just, I have the, the exact, the department shall not issue a general license under this section. under this section if the planning board recommends that the project be subject to an individual license, which is different than what is before you now, the general license. The department may issue a general license after expiration of forty-five days without local planning comment or upon receiving notification from the local planning board that it does not oppose the project's eligibility. So again, I can provide the board with, with all this in a, in a more detailed memo format so that you have, you know, a proper opportunity to, to review this more thoroughly.
That would be great. Yeah, if we looked at that ahead of our next meeting, I think it would be beneficial to hold a hearing to hear the concerns of the, of the public. Steve, go ahead.
The question is, so we're being asked to weigh in essentially. And then is the Conservation Commission also being asked to weigh in? And do those two, you know, discussions kind of get bubbled up or rolled up to the state under one kind of, you know, directive? Or how does that work?
Right. So Conservation has already issued their notice of intent for this. It was then appealed and superseding order has been issued from D E P. So they, Conservation has weighed in at this time. But they can provide the planning board with their thoughts and, and review of, of that application previously.
So I guess, is any board members opposed to posting a hearing at our next scheduled meeting? Or is that, that sound okay?
Sounds good to me.
Great. Okay. Seeing some nods, I think we're good to go there. So, okay. Excellent. Let me get back to our agenda here. All right. So the next section is the matters not anticipated by the chair. I did want to talk about the meeting format. So the last time we talked about this, you know, it was left up to the individual chairs, you know, how we were going to move forward with our meeting format. Rather than just make a decision, I just decided to have a forward discussion on that item. And ultimately, the board had consensus that we wanted to stay virtual. We have to also keep in mind that the hybrid approach used by town council is not available to our board, which also influenced that decision. We kind of made a decision at that time to stay on Zoom and revisit in March. There's been a lot of comments on it, a lot of feedback. I've heard all of it, you know, written emails and obviously during our meetings. I've talked to Council Cullen, President Lebec. We had some good conversations, and it is definitely my intent to get us back to in-person. I would like to kind of stick with our original plan that this board came up with and do two more virtual meetings, virtual on February twenty-seventh and virtual on March thirteenth and return in-person on March twenty-seventh and have that be a permanent return regardless of any decisions to extend the order by the governor's office. So those are my thoughts. Just go around the board real quick and see, see what we think about that. Bob, are you on board with that?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. As, as you recall, my preference would be for a hybrid. But I understand that's not something within our bailiwick. And I do prefer the, the in-person version to the Zoom. But I, you know, there is, this time of the year, it's kind of tough to get everyone here in person. You know, January, February, and into early March. So I think staying with Zoom for the next two meetings is probably the way to go. You know, I, we do the comprehensive, the local comprehensive plan meetings in person. Other than, you know, town council and staff and the consultants, virtually no one from the public goes to those meetings so far. So, you know, we do get a high percentage of, or not percentage, but a high volume of public input through Zoom. It's not like the public is not getting access. And when we go off of Zoom, a lot of people are going to lose the access that they do have on Zoom. So, you know, this is not an easy question. It's not as simple as maybe some, some people have suggested. So I'm in favor of your proposal. That's the long answer to your short question.
No, I thought, I thought that was great, Bob, and I do appreciate that. And I will say that I have heard many positive comments about Zoom. There's, there's pros and cons on both sides. And certainly, I agree that it's not black and white, that one is good and one is bad. I think, and there's good and bad on both sides. So Tim, what do you think about the game plan?
I think that's a good game plan. I think I would still prefer, and I don't know if it's just not even going to be in the wheelhouse to do a hybrid permanently. To Bob's point, you know, you can definitely notice the amount of public engagement that we get with the Zoom calls, with the ease of access, the general public to be able to zoom in, to provide comments and engage. But I do think on some of these, especially the complicated projects and applications that we see, there is a big benefit to be able to work through it as a board in person. There's something that is just beneficial to be able to be in person for that. And that's where I think the hybrid model for a lot of other towns has kind of balanced them both out because they allow the public comment and also the ease for the engineers, the lawyers, the consultants to be able to zoom in and have the board work in person. But, you know, I think a plan of the next couple are in Zooms. I believe they're already scheduled. And then switching to the base as being in person permanently makes sense.
Thank you, Tim. I appreciate that. And I certainly agree with you that the hybrid approach would be great if that came to planning board. I feel like it, I feel like it doubles the engagement because those that may not be able to drive to town hall can come in and those that may not be able to log on to Zoom can come to town hall. So I think it's the best of both worlds. I tuned into the last town council meeting, and I thought that was, I thought it was great engagement from the public. That was great. So let's see. Steve, your thoughts?
You know, I know Ms. Groden mentioned the importance of in-person for, for, you know, important matters. I don't necessarily disagree. However, I will say that I do think that the amount of engagement and the amount of participation that I've personally seen, having been on the planning board for well over six years at this point, has increased dramatically. A lot more people tune in, a lot more people, I, in my opinion, may not otherwise make the effort, appear to be making the effort to, to tune in and to become available for the meetings. I guess the only thing I will say is I can understand how certain people may find the technology part of it a little tricky. With that said, however, the, the access to information and the detailed amount of information that is now being provided from staff via the, you know, web links and so on and so forth, I think are kind of unmatched in terms of being current and up to date. So if the people who are truly interested in a topic, rather than waiting to the last minute, if, if, you know, they put it on their schedule and they can, you know, make time and effort to access the, the material that is clearly available and prominently displayed. You know, but I think we're going to ultimately have a much better informed population of folks looking to weigh in and comment to be educated on a particular topic.
Yeah, well said. Okay. Thank you, Steve. And Michael, what are your thoughts on the, the format plan going forward?
You know, I agree with your plan. I think having, you know, the opportunity of coming in person and also doing, you know, via Zoom, it's flex, you know, it gives flexibility for those who can't be in person. Me personally, obviously, I like to be in person, but, and I live like very close by. But I think having the opportunity of doing both, depending on the case, you know, it's, it's, it's a good idea to have. So I agree with your plan.
Okay. Well said. All right. It sounds great. So we've got kind of our marching orders, you know, for the next couple of months. And I do see President Lebec on. Do you have anything that you wanted to add before I kind of close out the meeting?
So just so you know, a lot of, when we went into researching and maybe, because the one good thing that came out of going remote was that the participation and people who normally wouldn't be able to participate, you know, people had a number of jobs. The, you know, single moms or people just, you know, want to put their kids to bed and things of that nature was very valuable. And I honestly stayed in remote probably longer. We could have went back in person, and I just wanted to keep that open for that same reason. So I can understand your reasoning, Steve. But the, and then when we, we spent a significant amount of money to upgrade because what we were having a problem with was feedback in our rooms. And if we were going to do a hybrid method, we wanted to do it with a spirit of excellence. And I don't know if you've watched, I know some of the towns have streamlined it, but there, it's not exactly seamless. And when you're talking about public comment in regards to a regulatory board, you can fall into open meeting laws if people, actually, we ran into a problem at a town council level where somebody wasn't able to get through for some reason. There was an error on our part, the town's part. We had to redo an item. So, you know, there's even with hybrid. And so if, and then on top of it, never mind staffing it. So the more regulatory boards that we have in, in hybrid, the more room for error, quite honestly. And, and we want to make sure that we, we do things with spirit of excellence and obviously be able to staff it properly. And that's, that's definitely an issue to be able to, we're limited in, in what, limited in talent and ability, but limited in the amount of hours already that our staff puts in to, to make these meetings happen, especially after hours. So again, not to say it's not possible. It's definitely something that's being talked about, try to, you know, I would probably say that the planning board would be, you know, top of the list, right, of, you know, conservation, zoning board of appeals. You know, these regulatory committees would be the top four in a hybrid, you know, upgrade, so to speak. But so I appreciate your thoughtfulness, everybody's thoughtfulness. And of course, you're, you're serving just on the board in general, you know, and being available. And it's not, you know, you're not doing, and people just automatically think that you're doing remote out of convenience. There is a convenience to it for sure. However, it's also, it's to, to leave, you know, availability for people who wouldn't necessarily be involved, to get them involved. So, so it's, it's tough because there's people who don't like it, who can't do it. And then there's people who embrace it. So again, it's a, it's a tough balance to find. So I think, I appreciate your thoughtfulness, your willingness to discuss it with myself. And again, when we dictated it out, it was up to the chairs to decide. So I think you've used wisdom and, and really tried to find a good compromise along the way. So I appreciate that. And of course, anytime continued discussion, anytime there's a, you know, a question or a thought to how to, you know, move forward, please let me know. Thank you. Because I'm not only the president of the council, I'm also the liaison of this board. So I appreciate it.
That's right. We're going to push your work. Well, thank you. Definitely appreciate that context and understanding that there's challenges associated with it. And yeah, that was definitely good information. All right. So moving along, let's get these minutes approved. Look for a motion to approve the January twenty-third, twenty twenty-three draft minutes.
A move.
Excellent. And a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Michael. All those in favor? Bob?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And myself, Steve Rocha, votes aye. And future meetings, February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three and March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three at seven P M. Any staff or board comments before we adjourn? Okay, good to go. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Bob. And a second? Thank you, Steve. All those in favor? Bob?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And myself, Steve Rocha, votes aye. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, guys.